Selectments meeting to order for Tuesday, September 15th. Roll call. We have Bill Crossman, Donald Poole, myself, A.M. Alley. Jake Thompson is absent, but we do have Andy Dora Town Manager and Elizabeth Bunker, Deputy Town Clerk is taking minutes. Approve agenda. I will be approving the agenda presented.
Second.
Second by Bill Crossman. All those in favor? Minutes. Approve the minutes from the September 1st meeting.
Who moved?
Second motion?
I was in here.
Now, all those in favor? And hands abstaining. Approve and sign treasures warrant number 11. So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Donald Poole. All those in favor? Communications. Jennings Cranford, John Harper Cemetery.
So yeah, you've gotten a letter from Inabutter to the cemetery over at John Harper Cemetery about the, some recent clearing of vegetation that they have done in, as a result. Uncovered an old pile of dirt that we had placed there and are asking for us to consider relocating that and not putting one there again. They addressed to Eric, the Chair of the Board, and all of the cemetery committee members. I don't think they've officially met yet, but I'm hoping to talk about it and it was, you know, if it's practical to have that there, strategic to have that there to be able to fill grave sites. It does, you know, there's a pile down below, but the ones that's down below, I don't think would give you great access to all the plots that are on this third or this older part of the cemetery here. They don't, I don't think they made the recommendation one way or the other than to say just keep it where it is because that's strategically put there.
None of the cemetery committee responded?
Not that I'm aware of. I think they've talked to each other here and there casually. I don't know that, I think Luther talked to the property owners directly. But beyond that, I don't, I don't know if they, I don't think they've met officially on any of it.
They say it's convenient for them to have it there. But looking at that picture there, it doesn't exactly look like that pile of dirt is exactly obstructing their view or any.
Must they're talking about the gravestones behind it or?
The trees down by there.
Yeah.
Doesn't look to me.
I'm surprised. There's not any grass going on.
Yeah.
If there was grass going on, he wouldn't even see it.
It's so dry, I guess.
What are they suggesting? Just moving it over behind those trees?
Yeah, I guess further down High Street, if you will, just tuck it in behind those trees right to the left in that picture.
I mean, I feel like the cemetery committee should really respond.
Good.
Because if we say, yeah, go ahead, and then they don't want them to, I don't want to step on it.
Yeah, I'd like to respond to that.
Can I just ask a question? Does the, do they bring it in from here and back up? Is that how they ask access?
I honestly couldn't say. I don't know the last time that pile was placed there. I don't, it was buried under many feet, you know. They, I think they cut, you can just barely see the grade stakes in the foreground there, but they probably went another 15 feet beyond the grade stake into our property, into the cemetery when they cleared it. So I mean, it was well covered prior to what they had done, so. I'll have the, see if they're going to meet anytime soon and give you a recommendation for the next meeting.
Speakers on the floor. Do we have anybody? Anybody? Is it should Emily there?
I think there's a couple of people on that are going to speak specifically about things on the agenda, but not, I don't think anyone at large.
Okay. We'll go into committee and department reports and appointments. Planning Department report. Ask Gabe if she's there.
I am here. So I have a slide. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Great. All right, well, I'll go ahead and start while Andy is getting my slide up.
I have, I have, this is a slide and there's about five or six that are on the CDC specifically.
So just the first slide would be great. Not the CDC slide, but the first, that's awesome. Thanks, Andy. Okay, so I'm just going to introduce myself because there may be people watching who don't know who I am, but my name's Gabe McPhail and I work in the town's planning department. I'm the Community Development and Engagement Coordinator. So I haven't given any updates to you guys in a while, so now that we're sort of back in, I would say, getting back to work on, on things that we left off doing in February and March, I just wanted to give you an update on some things where we left off. So starting with something that we had talked about in February, doing a sort of an assessment inventory of the existing committees and then looking at best practices for the committees. So we, as you know, Matt Jablonsky is our Island Fellow, so Matt is on the call today. Thanks for joining us, Matt. So one of Matt's first projects is taking on this committee assessment and best practices. So the primary goal of this, as we discussed, was to establish and adopt some practices that can really help committees succeed in achieving their purpose. So between now and the next board meeting, we're going to be connecting with committee chairs and conducting an inventory just to get a better understanding of how committees are currently doing their work and then what the town can do to help them in the work that they're doing. So in your next board packet, we're going to share an overview of some recommended changes to the committee processes, deliverables, expectations, all based on information that we gather from the committees and then also some best practices that have been researched. So we're gonna, we will ask you in that board packet to review the recommendations so we can discuss them at the September 29th board meeting. So that's that. Any questions on that? Okay. So I want to give a quick update on Sea Level Rise on behalf of the Sea Level Rise Committee. So the last time we talked about Sea Level Rise, you guys had just agreed to adopt a 2020 report that the committee had drafted. So that report and a two-page summary of the report is going to be available soon on the town website. One of the recommendations from the 2018 Flood Resilience Checklist Workshop that the Sea Level Rise team conducted along with a wide rate, a wide range of community stakeholders was to conduct more local data collection and also picture monitoring. That's so we could better document changes over time and then use that documentation to make local decisions about infrastructure, emergency management, et cetera. So with the help of Letitia Van Veren of Knox County EMA, we've developed a data collection system that we're actually going to be launching this weekend. So you'll see a bunch of large sort of ruler-type water level markers at various sites around town. And the Sea Level Rise data collection team, which also includes middle and high school students and community volunteers, they're going to begin monitoring those sites and collecting data as of this weekend. So that pilot project is going to be happening from now through December and we're going to be assessing how that went starting in January. And the Sea Level Rise team and the town are now part of four grants. So we're, these are not grants we've applied for, they're grants that we were asked to partner with. So these grants are Sea Level Rise and Resilience Grants. Two of them are with the Gulf of Maine Research Institute, GMRI. One is around citizen science and data collection and the other is a NOAA environmental literacy grant. And that is, that grant is to help build capacity in rural communities, rural coastal communities to plan and prepare for a more resilient future. So this grant, it also provides us with some funding, $7,500 to fund the time commitment that we're putting into this grant. We're also involved with a similar project with Maine Sea Grant. Their grant's called Collaborating, Collaborating Toward Climate Solutions. This is, this grant is to build and educate a network of coastal community leaders so that they have the capacity to navigate resilience planning. And then lastly, Lynell Mather of BLT and Andy are representing Vinyl Haven in a project called Developing a Model Coastal Resilience Ordinance to Protect Maine's Coastal Cities, Towns, and Residents. So that project title basically says what that's about. So any questions on Sea Level Rise?
No.
Okay. Broadband. So again, on behalf of the broadband committee, just reporting out, the committee has met several times since COVID to look at the broadband report and that's the product of the broadband RFP that we issued last fall. The goal of the report is really to present a viable and affordable fiber-to-the-premise broadband option that would be accessible for the, to the entire community. What the report currently contains is a high-level business model for a third-party, community-owned broadband network. So the committee is still a little uncertain that this is a viable option given that we have these two incumbent providers on the island already. So what we're doing, primarily Andy and I, are exploring what both Consolidated and Spectrum might be able to offer in terms of that affordable fiber-to-the-premise solution to all locations on the island. Jan Anne Sherman, who's the broadband committee chair, and I would like to see the broadband committee present and report recommendations to you guys in October. And ideally, we'd have three options to consider that we could bring to the community. The committee just received a $10,000 grant from the Maine Community Broadband Fund, Maine Community Foundation Broadband Fund to conduct a broadband outreach campaign that would enable us to bring these options out into the community, help us assess and map actual speeds and levels of service on the island, provide some digital literacy education, and then culminate in, and hopefully, a community vote on one option by the spring, which would coincide with state and federal broadband grant funding cycles. So that's broadband. Any questions or comments on that?
Do you repeat the, where the grant came from again?
Yep, it's through the Maine Community Foundation's broadband fund.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? Okay. Downtown project, I'm not going to, I'm not going to speak to the funding process. That grant, Andy will speak a little bit more about that, but we are still in the grant funding process for downtown projects, primarily working on EDA, Economic Development Agency, funding. And along with that, we're going to start doing some more community outreach engagement around the downtown project this fall and winter. So the last thing I wanted to talk about, just, we left off with this, I think, in February or, yeah, the last meeting we had in February was community engagement. And what we had talked about was launching some community outreach conversations, like having potlucks and, and focusing on different projects and actions that the town was undertaking. So since we can't do that, obviously, we're going to try some sort of virtual process. We haven't really figured out exactly what's going to be most effective, but we'd like to continue that in some way. So we're also currently starting a website redesign for the town and that's to improve the overall user experience and just make the site more intuitive. And Matt is also helping work on that project. And then we had also talked about in, in the late winter, starting a town newsletter. So we're going to be working on that as well, which will help, I feel like, will help a lot with sharing updates with the community in a platform other than Facebook or, or just the website. So any questions on any of that? Feedback? Okay. Great. Thank you, guys.
So Road Commissioners' report, we added the, this week's to the box after the weekend. I've gone by it. Any questions on what you had seen there?
That tree removal service, Cliffside Tree, that's been hired by F.I.E.C., correct?
There is that, I've asked as well, or we haven't hired him. Any questions?
One of Waste Watchers committee request.
All right, put in the packet, I think Pat.
She invited her in.
Pat, if you can hear us and are going to talk, feel free to chime in. But I met with Pat and Amy from Waste Watchers Group about the idea of trying to open up the swap shop again. So they had presented last week, midweek, to the EOC group just to get their feedback and thoughts on it, you know, relative to COVID precautions and policies. So these, this is what they had shared with us. I don't know if, if from that into the weekend, if there was any other modifications or thoughts. I think Pat, at least Pat and/or Amy, they talked with the staff up there to get some more feedback. There's also consideration for a survey, committee survey, to just get some feedback from people generally about the swap shop use. With that, Pat, are you on there?
Yeah, I, I think the, the reason we wanted to be on the agenda tonight was to, first of all, bring forward the questionnaire because we'd like to understand better how the community uses the swap shop. When Amy and I were up there, three people watched us talking with Kenny outside and stopped us either right then or the next day to say, oh, you're going to open the swap shop. So I think there's a demand for it, but, so if we were going to open it shortly, we would need to have COVID precautions. But Waste Watchers, from the beginning, this has been on the job list and it's kind of at the bottom of the job list, is to improve the swap shop so that we're doing better recording, where people aren't just dumping their trash there. So the survey, so first of all, we want your blessing that we should keep working on this. And second, this permission to do the survey so that we have a better sense of, if, if people just drop their electronics and no one ever takes an electronic, you know, we shouldn't allow electronics to get dropped there because, because, because they're likely going to be collected. And one of the things that Amy and I thought would help, it's very hard to get, Kenny knows how he likes to do things, but to have an imagination for a different way of doing things, I think it needs a little bit of people spending a little bit of time with their presence there. And Amy and I are willing to do that. Kenny talked, I'm sorry, I'm probably off subject, but Kenny talked warmly about Bodine and how she kind of ran the swap shop while she was here and told him what he needed to get out of there and told him this was junk or whatever or said, no, leave that for someone. And I think part of the survey hope is that someone will step forward or several people that would want to be the Bodine of the future because it's going to be, it would be a hard thing to ask an employee to manage it like a person who is interested in moving the goods. And I don't, I don't, so we need, we need more information, but we've went to the public, the Health Committee just to make sure we could open safely and it would mean spending a little bit of money, which I think can be donated. Pretty sure it can be donated.
Thoughts? Feedback?
I'm fine with going forward with the questionnaire. I'd rather have that completed and data presented back to us before we reopen it. But that's just mine.
I didn't hear that.
Sorry, I, I offer the questionnaire. People want to use it and how much they use it, but I, I would rather have the questionnaire go out, the data collected, then presented back to us before we reopen.
Okay.
I move we endorse the committee's efforts and the questionnaire survey.
Seconded by Pam. So what did Luther and Kenny say about any of this stuff, about which day would be better? And all those questions, did you ever get answers to those?
Well, we didn't talk with Luther, it was all Kenny. He, he said standard Kenny, well, I just assumed I'd have it, but, but he was very amenable, I think he was very amenable to it opening if we, if Amy and I took some of the load. He, I think he had said Sunday, Monday. Yes, so as it turn, as it, I think the rules are in COVID that hard goods, the buck lives on hard goods for, I don't even know if this is still true, 48 hours and soft goods for 96 hours. So there's no way to bring the clothes in on Monday afternoon and open it up to taking clothes on Wednesday morning. So I think that's sort of something we've figured out, maybe with Andy's encouragement, that we could just accept the clothes that come, if he's going to take Sunday, Monday, just accept them, put them in a box with a date on them and they don't go in the swap shop until the following week. So I, I think it's going to be a, a work in progress and being able to be on the ground and not having, to being able to solve problems as we, as they come up or finding better ways to do them than we have thought of in advance, I think would be the kind of thing that Amy and I would be hoping that we could, could do with your blessing. And if we're not asking Kenny to change his process every 15 minutes, then it might be more, it might be okay.
Pat, where exactly would the, would you store the items?
You know those big exactas? There were, I was just so handy, Sunday, they were, they were right in front there. I don't know why, if, something like that, if you just let the person put their stuff in the bin and then the following week, I'm not going to promise every Wednesday morning at 6:00 a.m. I'm going to be there pulling the clothes out, but we'll, we'll stock the shop. And that way, being able to keep a better eye on the stuff that's in there and that's being dropped off and that's ridiculous or that's not ridiculous or watching things move even. I, I think it'll be very educational for Amy and I and anybody else on the committee that might want to take part in, or any, any community member that wanted to take part in making it work well or better.
And do you think there should be a charge for drop-off?
I. I think we, okay, so one idea is, I think this was Amy's idea, is that we have a table for drop-off. You put it on the table, but you register who you are and what you dropped off. And so, I mean, not for little knickknacky things that would fit in your trash bag anyway, but for, say you bring in a sofa or something, you, you're, you want to make sure that it's, well, I think the rules, the true rules are, you're supposed to see the attendant and he's going to say, take it or not take it. And we know that doesn't happen, right? I mean, it happens sometimes with some people, but not everybody. But yeah, so it's just like trying to figure out how to do it. But I think a thing that's not likely to get sold should be paid for in advance. I mean, I don't know, or not taken, not taken should be paid for ahead of time.
Right. Yeah, because some of the things that are left up there should not be left.
Right, that's why I think, again, the survey first, then reopen after.
Right.
That's my opinion on it.
You know, there are things that Goodwill does not take that we would take, but it's a pretty interesting collection of things and it's, they don't take, they take computers because they have people that dismember the parts and so that might be a better thing to tell people, take your computer to Goodwill. Nobody's got to, I just, I can't imagine a person picking up a printer from the, that, because they look horrible when they come in. The other thing, I mean, Kenny said, I said something like, maybe they should prove it to you that it's working, like plug in your microwave before you leave it here. And he said, well, people can check it before they go. There's a plug right over there, everybody knows that. And I'm, why didn't, but maybe the people that take things that run on electricity away do know that and go check them. I don't know. But I think we could do a lot with signage and instructions and Gabe doing us some beautiful stuff for the wind and other places that we advertise. I think there's a way to make this better. And the option is if people can't participate, if there's too much participation that is out of, out of the rules, then we don't have a swap shop. I mean, I think it's a community interest to, to make it good and have it run well.
I'm, I guess I'm okay with the idea of these improvements to, I'm not going to call it a building, but to the trailer, but yeah, as long as they're donated along with the work. Other than that, it seems a little overkill, I guess. You know, putting a window and lights in there, with the door open, it's always been just fine.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we get donated windows all the time. There was one at the demo and I asked Kenny if he'd save it for the swap shop and he said, oh, well, no, we should just get whoever's installing it to pick one out of the ones we have saved already in the trailer. So I mean, this, we don't have to buy a window, that's for sure. So did I, did I hear the wishes that we do the survey and then go from there? Is that what I heard?
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor, but we haven't voted on it yet.
I agree with the W and I think this committee has been historically cooperative and common sense and precautionary. And the endorsed, the motion is to endorse their efforts and the survey and, and I'm sure common sense and precaution will dictate anyway that they do a survey before they reopen.
Yeah, okay. Seconded by Pam, way back when. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you, Pat and Amy.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you.
And what are the current status for?
We got a fair amount of projects, as we know, underway. There are just about everything, I think we have them working on is included in here in the update. The exception of the harbor plan. So the garage, we're still moving ahead and trying to make sure we can close by the end of this month. The Carrying Place Bridge, they did receive some numbers back just today, just before the meeting. I don't, I didn't have a chance to look through them. We're still trying to find a way to get that project cost within the parameters of what the town's approved for funding. Downtown improvements, again, been working with the EDA application process with McCad and the engineers. They have to prepare a certain portion of, for the grant application, preliminary engineer report. So we're working with them on that. We have a meeting set up this Thursday with the representative from EDA. Actually, I don't know if you remember meeting him, Alan, he came out a few years ago, met with him about flood, flooding issues. So we're going to meet with him virtually on Thursday. And then the harbor plan is that, you know, we've gotten that grant to conduct that and so they're supposed to kick that off, I think, next week and wrap that up by the end of the calendar year. So. Any questions? Ask of them?
Sorry, is the?
Sorry, the last in the schedule update, the execution contract with rub building was part of salt shade completed prior to end of year.
Good call. So we do have, they did, the manufacturer did send us a contract. Given the lead up time, it's gonna be close because they've gone from twelve to as many as sixteen weeks now, lead time to get these built in here. So the sooner we sign this contract, the better in terms of getting it here. If you want to authorize, authorize us to sign the, have the town sign that contract, either have me sign it or have Eric sign it before you leave today, if you're in agreement on that.
What happens if something falls through with the land, then where is it gonna go on the other piece of land?
It could still. We have no reason to think nothing, you know, something's gonna fall through on the land deal right now. But you can choose to wait if you want, you know, until it's done. I mean, even, even if you did it today, I mean, it's, you know, two weeks from now is, you know, it's not gonna make the difference between getting it up this year and into next year. You know, if you're sixteen weeks out anyways, it is what it is. Even at twelve weeks is pushing it at this point. So I think we're just gonna plan to have the sand presumably just stored behind the garage as we have the last few years, get something that's a little more coarser, like we did last year. That didn't hold the water as much as it did in the years before. And they'll work on getting it up as soon as they can.
So if we execute the contract and then it's not completed by the end of the year, what happens?
There's nothing on, on this contract says that they're gonna have it completed. I mean, they've got, they made it very clear that their time for performance, rubber grease to begin work immediately upon receipt of the above deposit and to begin materials delivery within twelve to sixteen weeks of order.
Okay.
That's.
This month required to have salt shade completed. So I'm, I guess I'm just struggling with that part.
Yeah.
It has to be done by the end of the year.
If, that's, that's the parameters we wanted to have on it.
Okay, so that's the parameters we put on it. Okay, this isn't something new that they're putting in and if it's not done, then they get to keep the money and walk away.
Right.
All right, just, just clarify that. Thanks.
Yeah, no, we put that, Fran, that was our goal, your goal was just have it, have it done by then.
Move, we actually could find back.
Second, take anybody on the full, any more discussion? All those in favor? So what I'm, I just don't understand what we're doing. Contract for the property falls through and we haven't even got survey done yet, so.
Well, it's being done next week and we have no reason to think that it's gonna fall through at this point, but.
And if that, if the deal for the property falls through, then we won't be building on that land, any, we won't be moving that land anyway. We'll be doing it on the land we already do.
So we can just move it wherever we want.
Yeah.
Okay. So I can sign that. Okay, old business airstrip contract with the new terms.
Are there things in there, again, all the strike throughs that were in there before, I gave you another copy of it, were things that were raised by PIA. The only thing I've gotten feedback on was the, the additional insurance. I can pull up what was shared by the insurance company. So we have coverage broker through J Edward Knight. And they've, they've got, there's another company that ensures that. So the additional insurance status for the town on the policy, on their policy, if we're on their policy, it keeps the town from being sued by their insurance company if there was an accident at the airport. Something they recommended that our attorney would have, likely have some issues with as well if if we remove our names equally from, from that contract. I haven't provided that to our attorneys yet, assuming that we're gonna both continue to additionally insure each other. But they're strongly recommended that we remove that as, as proposed, that we have an attorney weigh in on that.
Which section is that, ten, eleven, insurance?
Yeah. So we're both, they, they recommend that both parties have insurance.
Right.
And unless I'm mistaken, the rate for a flight from the mainland to Rockland or back was a hundred and thirty, and now it's two hundred and thirty five, right?
For a single person, correct. Yeah, the flight, that flight is two hundred and thirty five dollars for one leg.
I do think, I mean, that's quite a height, but I do, I do think probably it's being more carefully managed now than it was generously managed before. I think probably, probably the reason for.
I think they'll find their services down quite a bit with that kind of.
Yeah.
They'll be fine in the summertime.
On the other hand, they're encouraging people to travel together because four people is sixty five dollars a piece.
So it's still the same no matter what, because before it was, it wasn't, it was so much a person and if you had, if you had four people on a flight, it would be more than a hundred and thirty dollars before, before, yeah. But now it's just two hundred and thirty five dollars.
Yeah, if you go by yourself, it's two thirty five. If you and another person fly, you're each paying a hundred and whatever, and then the three, so what they didn't do before was, that's the cost of the flight. Before it was, if you go by yourself, it's a hundred and twenty or a hundred and thirty. Second person goes, you split that with the third person goes, they pay the same price as that, that two persons did. So it's slightly, you know, at the end of the day, if the, the cost comes, the total cost comes about the same, but they were, they were running flights with just one person on there and, you know, losing money if there wasn't more than two.
I think they're gonna make a greater effort now to let people know that if you wait half an hour, you can party with somebody else to coordinate those kinds of travel.
So the, just, you know, the rates is, that's number seven in the contract that we would have within the operation and the rates. The proposal was that rates are set in the discretion of the company and are subject to change without notice. Like importantly too, it's, it's worth making sure, and they're not proposing any changes to it, but the emergency medical flight ability. I haven't checked in to see with, I think, last I knew they were, weren't flying after five. You know, in the current, you know, the past contract shows till eight thirty, up until September fifteenth, from June fifteen to September fifteenth, that's just a big part of transport from that last boat's left at four thirty. If, if it's before five, they may turn around. If it's after five, they're probably definitely not gonna turn around. You know, so that plane comes in really handy at times to be able to transport people over during the daylight hours still. So I assume that's something that we want to make sure hasn't, won't be changing. Other than that, you've agreed to take on the maintenance of the property for mowing and the light maintenance, if there's issues with the lights. They're asking for the town to pay for all utilities and services required for proper operation of the airstrip. I don't believe there's any water sewer up there. There's no heat up there.
What about telephone?
Telephone. I don't think there's much traffic. I don't think there's a trash can up there, but the phone. I think we pay for a line for the the AWAS system. I don't think we pay for that payphone. That's probably thirty, forty bucks a month.
I'm what I'm wondering about what's gonna happen with payphone. I don't know how much it is, but I know that Kevin had it installed up there to make local calls, like already called him in different places, right?
I don't know the history.
I don't know if they charge anymore for these.
No, there's no money collected, but someone always said pay for it. It's not, huh?
There's a, there's a phone, you, you get a bill for the payphone we have at the thoroughfare.
Okay, that's why I was wondering who pays for that. Do we pay for it? Do they pay for it?
I don't believe we do. I think, I thought the only, the only line we pay for is that AWAS line, which is that weather system there. So I can, I can double check.
What's gonna happen with the payphone up there?
They're asking for the town to take on.
Paying for that.
That's one of the proposals.
And how much is that per month?
I think it's between thirty and forty bucks a month for the payphone at the thoroughfare, so I assume it'd be the same.
Do we really need it with cell phones?
Good point.
Yeah.
Now they, everybody has coverage out here everywhere.
There's still quite a few that don't get it when they come out and do work for us or we see them in passing, depending on their carrier, they might not have it.
A few, a few hundred dollars a year, no.
If you say that a few hundred times a year adds up though.
Right. I mean, if someone's coming out here and they have, they should know that they don't have, they have a car that doesn't work. Right. Make plans ahead of time so you can contact first one or parties or whatever.
I've captured that right. They are, they were looking to strike the financial information that had been provided in the past at the renewal release. And then they, they're looking to strike the current language under sixteen, the town's right on default.
So I would be feel more comfortable if we ran this by a lawyer. I'm not.
Yeah, and.
And I don't know what, are some of these things gonna leave us wide open to different things? I think we should run this by our lawyer. I mean, we'd be smart to. I mean, one, one catastrophe up there could cost the town a lot of money if this isn't.
Right.
Some, I mean, best way, I, I think we should run it by our lawyer and then he can tell us. I mean, I don't want to be left off. I don't, none of us want to, I don't think, but.
No, I don't.
I mean, I'm assuming this is fine, but I don't know.
I think if one of us would like to see it run by an attorney, we should run it by an attorney.
Right. Let's do that.
I mean, some of these things about liability and who's carrying what, I think, I think we should know what our.
What town's liability is if we sign this, yeah.
Right. So I don't feel comfortable signing it.
I agree.
Without knowing.
Yeah.
I guess I wrongly assumed the attorney had already probably looked at it.
Also in B, it says principal place of business, South Thompson name. I'm assuming that's supposed to be Thompson.
Right.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I think I tried passing some of this particular change in this through the MMA and they, you know, they hope maybe they would give a little feedback on the rest of it and it was too particular to ask, so they should run this by if you want, you know, if you want them to have it, they recommended it. So and the insurance company is not, so I'll send it along with your approval to the lawyers.
And you said the insurance company recommended that both parties have carry insurance.
Yep.
So they obviously have, right? I would assume.
They have, I think that what they were asking us was that our disagreement requires they add us to their policy as an additionally insured and there's a cost to doing that.
Okay.
And they wanted that cost passed on to us or have that just removed from the contract. And they, they thought, and I don't know if they confirmed it, they thought it was upwards of close to ten thousand dollars by having us on there as an additional insured. And that was one of the costs that we had presented to us back in early August, I think, or into July for consideration.
See. How much would it be for our month? It seems like we're just kind of, I understand we need the airstrip, we need to have a plane coming in and out, but seems like they're asking for a lot and we're getting, well, I gave nothing in return. I just we just paid an extra ten thousand dollars for insurance. We now have to pay for all the utilities. I know there's no water and sewer enough, but this is part of their business. Why, why are we now taking on all these extra costs?
I mean, I could see if we own it, we maintain putting the dirt down on the runway and stuff like that, but.
Yeah. I mean, some of those things. The cost of doing this for them, like why are we all of a sudden, why do we as a town to pay for it?
Yeah, let's have our lawyers looking over. Okay, new business, RFP loan rates for capital projects, review, release document.
So being that we are getting close to the end of the month and looking to close on the garage and having to sign a check over for that as it goes through. I did put this out and so they're, they come back to us for the next meeting on the twenty ninth. We put it out the bid last year and just the timing of the way the, the projects fell through and the bids came in, we didn't actually close anything. We never, nothing happened for us to need to close on it. The rates are significantly lower now than they were then, so we'll even save some, probably tens of thousands of dollars on the loans that we're looking at taking out. So it was a good, so I figured, given that timing at the end of the month, we're gonna close on that. The paving is done. So put those two out there. Once we get a better handle on the bridge project, we can put that one out. I did have one, one bank already respond. I sent it out yesterday. Another one had, had responded to asking a question if we, if we were looking to also include our, our cash accounts, you know, open checking and deposit accounts with them. Sometimes when, I guess what they're seeing now is they can get better rates if they package the loan accounts and deposit accounts. I don't know. That was a question I was gonna raise with you anyways at this meeting. Camden National rates are changing again for, for those accounts. And I think we, our year, our, our three, I think it was a three year term we had for banking services ran up this spring, if you remember. Rate for down, we chose to do another year with Camden. The rates are changing again with Camden, the sweep account that we have. If we don't move it over to the ICS sweep, it's gonna go down to point zero five percent, I believe it was. And it's at point two five right now. If we go to the ICS sweep, it'd stay at point one five. So, you know, we're not talking about gaining a significant amount of money, but if all, if, you know, I get, if the trend is that it's going down, I thought we were locked in at that point two five for the year. They said we're not. So I don't know if you want to shop around just to see, you know.
Shop around.
If it is that we stay with them, I mean, just see what it is right now, not locking a long term thing, but if we want to see.
I would think we'd want to lock in more than a couple of years at the most. I would think hopefully in a couple of years this turns around.
At this point, you'd probably be better off just locking it in six months and see what happens in the next six months. But if it's shopping around and moving away from Camden National, I'm all for it.
If it's point oh five, you're not gonna get any lower than that unless you get zero.
Exactly, yeah.
Pretty much.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, let's shop around. It doesn't hurt.
I'll, I'll add that, it's kind of like another piece to the banks I have shared with. I sent it to the first, sent it to Machias, I sent it to Bar Harbor Bank, sent it to Camden. I sent it to Bangor Savings. I can continue to look for others. We're at two weeks now, so I guess some of them can turn it around. Some of the bigger ones have a harder time turning around in less than two weeks. But if there's others that, I just went to the ones I know we've worked with in the recent past, who are interested in working with us. So if others come up, I can send along to them, but I'll follow back up with having them add deposit account interest rates. Development Fund, sell this success. Gabe, are you still with us?
I sure am. Would you be able to bring up our slides?
So apparently you're not seeing our slides?
Um, I am not seeing the slides. I'm still looking at the planning and community development slide. Aha, very good. Thank you so much. Okay. Um, so we wanted to do a little bit deeper dive into this because we do have a request. So I wanted to just do a little recap on this concept of a community development corporation or CDC. If you guys recall, at the January twenty eighth Select Board Meeting, you granted approval for the Planning Department to work with a small group of advisors to begin exploring essentially the, the cultural and political will of the community to proceed with a development. Or I should say it's proceed with further exploration and possible development of a community development funding entity. And this funding entity, as we discussed, would support sustainable economic development that would be in alignment with community values and goals. Things that were discussed or, or determined by the comprehensive plan, the downtown master plan. And this concept of a community development funding entity is a recommendation from the downtown master plan. So an advisory team, so that was me, that is me, Andy, Emily Lane, Steve Cashin and Carrie Cameron. We've been meeting, we've met several times since COVID to conduct conversations and do sort of an initial assessment with, probably I think we spoke. Probably, I think we spoke with over thirty community stakeholders that were identified. By us, the advisory committee, as representing certain sectors of the population, certain business sectors. So. Just trying to get a broad cross section of community stakeholders. And again, the goal for this really was just to sort of say, hey, we have this idea. This is where this idea came from, the downtown master plan. And we would like to pursue further exploration and development of what is called a quasi municipal. Community development corporation, which means that there would be an aspect of it that would be. So essentially, the board members of this development corporation would be appointed by the town based on skill set or need. That the that the entity had and it would not be a tax funded. Entity at all whatsoever, but would be funding projects that are in alignment with, again, town values and goals. Next slide, please. So. What we did in this process was to, again, just meet, discuss, do do questionnaires with these stakeholders. And what we found through our conversations was that even though some people had a lot. You know, there were some people that had reservations. The majority of the people were receptive. They were. Everyone was curious to learn more about what this idea was. And so there are some key or sort of fundamental aspects of what came out of the conversations we had with people. So everyone said they really wanted transparency and how an entity, this entity would be developed and then certainly how it would be. Operate, how it operated, that there should be community participation in developing or creating this fund. That and lending should be equitable. And then again, should be in alignment with community goals and values and that there needed to be a component of not just lending. Or money put towards projects without some level of support to help those borrowers succeed, whether it was technical assistance. You know, help writing business plans, et cetera. And that whatever. Funding was offered for whatever project, that there be a way to leverage existing funding options or existing grant programs. And that it really should be filling a void or 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 filling a niche so that it's not just another fund that would duplicate existing funding options. So I'm, I obviously I'm on the call today. Emily Lane is joining us on the call today as well and. The advisory team has put together these next steps that are leading to a request. So our recommended next steps. For this entity is to essentially continue the exploration, moving toward potential development of. The quasi municipal model for the CDC. And that we would like as an advisory team to look at those stakeholders that we've spoken with, identify additional people in the community. And then recommend individuals to serve on what we'd like to see a seven member CDC development committee through the town. And that we would bring those recommendations forward to you and that you would appoint individuals to serve a one year term on this committee. The mission of the committee would be to research and recommend actions to you, the select board, which would facilitate the development of a quasi municipal funding entity. The recommendations that the committee brings forward, so their recommended actions, they would be implemented and overseen by. The planning department and we would have a timeline of of doing that by essentially this time next year. So October first of next year. So we have a specific request that we're putting forward to you. Next slide, please. And that is we are requesting or the planning department is requesting that you approve these recommended next steps, the recommended next steps we just read. And that if you approve them, we will, the planning department will work with the advisory team to bring that list of. Committee appointment recommendations to you for consideration by the next board meeting. So. One thing I I just wanted to put out there because we, obviously I mentioned at the outset, Matt and I are working on this idea of. You know, committees, you know, what are they doing? What are they for? How does this align with the work that the town was doing and we've, you know, with your strategic planning? We've talked about not growing horizontally, but really aligning our work and and trying to streamline it a bit and at least making sure that everything. Is aligning with the comprehensive plan and existing plans in existence. So I'm just bringing forward these assessment questions. Which I'll probably do whenever I bring a request to you, especially around a project or a committee. So I'm just putting these out there for consideration. How does it align with existing objectives? Planning documents. Do we have the capacity to pursue this request? Are there realistic deliverables in a in a reasonable timeframe? And is there any other information that you need to consider the request? And I think I've identified that it it does align. There, I think when I I I know when I sent you the initial memo on this back in February. I identified the aspects of your strategic plan that. Aligned with this with this concept of the CDC and it does align with the comprehensive plan and the downtown master plan. Capacity is the planning department already has this in our 2021 fiscal year budget to work on. Um, and I do believe that with focused objectives and a concrete work plan that we can. We can execute the deliverables by the October first, 2021 deadline. So the last question leads to questions for you guys. Do you need further information to consider this request? So at this time, Emily and I are available for your questions or feedback or comments. Thank you.
I move approval.
Second.
Secondly, my Pam. Need a session? Sorry, Andy, can you go to the next slide? Any session? All those in favor?
Sorry to be so difficult.
Jake.
Yeah.
Dana. Yeah.
Great.
Armless lying inside.
Yeah, you guys have very challenging. I just wanted to put this out there in case anyone is watching this or wants to learn more. We do have the CDC concept proposal. On the town website, you can just go to townofvinylhaven.org. There's a find it fast button in the nav, the upper nav bar. And just put in or look for CDC concept proposal and that will give you better information about what the quasi municipal model is. And just sort of what this exploration phase that the advisory team has been working on is all about. You can also contact me directly and my contact information is on the screen. So thank you guys and thank you, Emily, for for joining us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you both. Okay, EDA grant funds, review downtown preliminary grant documents and approve matching funds.
So you had, I provided the part of the the nexus statement and so far the description of the project that we were working on to provide to EDA. Just before this meeting started. Get an email from Alan confirming that we're meeting Thursday, but also that the the funds that. Damar Scott got recently and other towns have gotten that were addressing resiliency issues that came out of a FEMA declaration from a few years ago. And it was providing eighty twenty match, twenty percent local match to the request. Those funds are no longer available. So. EDA still funds cap public works projects generally. And so the match for that is fifty fifty. And so we do need to probably just look at that again. I didn't just kind of preliminary, look preliminarily, look at it. And we increased our, we're increasing our ask for EBA to three million dollars. It was going to be two million dollars, but we didn't get the northern boards grant this year. So. Looking to ask for three million and putting our match at no less than one point five million. To see that through the project estimated cost or opinion of cost from the engineers for different components is just under five million. So we'd still be left to find. About five hundred or six hundred thousand dollars when we look at what we have currently. So if we look at our. Reserve funds are, we have a road reserve is primarily funded through the state's funding that comes every year. To make improvements to state aid roads at thirty five thousand dollars a year. We don't, we use it, we just save it and build a reserve. The last couple of years, we put in more money because of debt, debts that had been cleared. So instead of just dropping that payment, we shifted it knowing that other payments were coming. So the road reserve. Is at about five hundred and eighty thousand and the sidewalk funds are about four hundred and fifty thousand. So the two of those together were just, just, just over a million bucks in the reserve to be able to put towards a match for the road and sidewalks. Through that downtown project. We did talk a few meetings ago about looking at doing work on High Street. I'm still waiting to. Get an idea on timing and cost for that. Just met with Kevin and Dan today and got a few things I have to follow up on with the state about that'll impact some of that, but. You know, I'm just going to make a guess based on past work that that they've done on sidewalks out here is that we're probably, if we use town crew. We're probably looking at between seventy five and a hundred thousand is my guess for that section of sidewalk. That's just a guess right now. So if we're going to use the road for the sidewalk reserve to to pay for that. If it's on the lower end of that, I think we still have what we needed for a local match. We have about nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars for those two reserves. We have the six hundred and twenty five that came from M dot for the MPI project. We committed six hundred and twenty five thousand dollar match for that. So if we add that six twenty five to our nine eighty and if the water district is able to kind of pledge two hundred and seventy five thousand, I think it was. To fixing the water main through there. And, you know, that gets us to to one point eight million. And we're asking for three. So that's puts us well above the fifty percent threshold and. Looks pretty good when when we're going into that. Was one of the things we didn't score as high on with the northern borders is we were at pretty close to the minimum for the match. And others, others came with more money and less of a required match from them. So that does help you score a little bit better. You know, so it looks like we can do that. But again, it does leave us a little over a hundred thousand dollars to find to be able to finish that off. Now, whether some of that can be shaved off or. Or if more is added to it, you know. A visit one that coming in, that still puts us in a good position to move ahead on some of this. You know, to put this request in the EBA, we'll know more after Thursday. But other things that were glaring or concerning or issues, here's a, an image of the timeline that the engineers kind of worked on for a project schedule. Kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at. So between those documents, some of the stuff on the funding, are there any questions, concerns? How do you feel about the EBA grant application?
The total five million, three million was a. A fifty fifty match and then the remaining two million, you cited these various sources like the sidewalk and highway. Of those, those are, those are fifty fifty pros match with someone else.
So if we're asking EDA for for the three million, we've got to be able to put up the one and a half million for that, right?
Yeah.
So basically we're getting a million and a half while we have three million on top of it.
We're we're funding.
If we're asking for three million, we're going to get a million and a half.
No, we're asking for three, hoping to get three, right?
Right.
That's our ask is for three million.
I have that right, Gabe?
But if we have to put up half, we're really getting a million and a half or are we getting four point five total? If it's a three million dollar grant, we have to match half of it. We're really getting a million and a half dollar grant, right? And we're putting up a million and a half.
We're asking. All right, now, yeah, now.
So if they end up giving us the one, one point five, let me just throw this in here.
That's my question. I mean, if it's a three million dollar grant, we have to put up half, it's really a million and a half dollar grant.
Yeah, I was just trying to run these through real quick since we got that email. So if that's, if we look at it that way, and then only. We asked for three million, we're putting up the one point, up to one point eight. They're going to give us one point five originally if they can get a full fifty percent if we can look at it up to three million. And that will leave us at one point six left to fund.
Right. And what about that one point six?
So that's where we can go back next year for northern borders. We do, again, we need to talk with the engineers. Is that funding? The big shift to go from twenty percent to fifty percent? So we're going to, again, we'll learn more with them when we talk Thursday, but. Northern borders, if we go back to them for another, you know, million, million and a half. Uh, we're, you know, if there's no other big sources of funding, we'd have to probably look at taking loans out to make the difference.
Yeah, I think too, I think too that, again, so we, you know, our conversation on Thursday will reveal more and the engineers will be at that conversation. And so we can look at the total project as we've presented it so far and also look, you know, make assessments because. We we have been writing this as a resiliency project. So the EDA narrative and the grant itself has been around resilience. So now that it's changed to a public works infrastructure project, we might need to alter it slightly anyway. So we won't, we won't really know. I don't think we'll really know the scope of of potential changes until we have that conversation on Thursday. And I'm hoping what what we can do with the engineers is just look at that total project and see what might be changing as a result of that. Obviously, we know. The essentials are the infrastructure pieces. And, you know, we, I don't think we want to be starting to trim stuff off of that, but we definitely need to know. You know, what is, what is, what is fundable and if if what we have in our existing project proposal is all still fundable? Or if there are things that will automatically need to be, I don't say eliminated, but maybe funded elsewhere. So I will, we'll definitely know more after Thursday.
So this will be on the agenda in the next meeting too?
Yeah.
I mean, this four hundred and fifty thousand that you can take out of it pretty quick by not relocating the. Law district and not screwing with the calendar hours.
Right. And a hundred and eighty thousand, the reconstructing was in the sections there.
I mean, there's things really shave, yeah. I mean, I was just curious about how that worked if we were putting up one point five and we got three or if we're putting up one point five and we got. One point five like I thought.
And let's speed bump stuff too, you know. Probably a little more kill.
Yeah, so you'll have, you'll have a lot more information from the end of the week and then especially for our next meeting in two weeks. So, I mean. We'll know then. Plus, it's not like we're going to need the money next somewhere because most of that proposed work wasn't until twenty twenty two, right, in that thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Twenty one, twenty two, yeah.
The way the the DOT project works is that they want to see considerable, we, our timeline we presented to them. Was assuming that we'd get the northern borders and then we'd get the EBA and that we'd make a significant start in twenty twenty one. And so that the. Project there does, you know, the timeline there does show some construction starting September of twenty one. And then they got years twenty two and twenty twenty three, much smaller on the end of that table there. But the majority of both of those years covered for construction.
And the and the reason we we we, we spoke with the engineers about this and they were pretty clear that if we did not. Do something that we would lose those DOT funds. There, there was a slight possibility that, you know, the COVID, using COVID as a. As a reason for delay could could possibly. Help us stall the stall that project a little bit, but they were, they're, they're pretty certain that we needed to do something or else we'll lose that six hundred and twenty five thousand.
Well, I mean, the project, you've got to dig up the road and do the stuff under the road first before you can do the sidewalk. So there's definitely phases that, I mean. I would assume that we could do something next year with the six hundred and twenty five thousand.
You put a good dent.
Yes.
Yeah. That water.
We can use that six twenty five pretty quickly.
Right.
But I mean, obviously, you start, you don't build the sidewalk first and then put the water pipe in.
Right, right.
Well, if you buy the paper, you enjoy doing things.
Twice, or three times.
Two or three times.
Yeah.
At a at a greater cost each time.
Yeah, that's natural. This is government people.
Okay, report from town manager on that optimistic note about. Assuming quite a bit of time, law enforcement contract and and concerns and issues that people brought forward. So I am meeting with, I hope to do it before we this meeting, but a couple of them are out. And the way the schedule's worked out, we're meeting tomorrow. So I'll be going over to meet with the sheriff and the county administrator to talk about what we presented with them is a draft proposal for a contract. Includes the eighty hours to be filled, plus the other changes that we had asked for last winter when we sent it to them. We'll see what they're willing and able to deliver on, I think they can deliver on. I did just note out that I have not secured housing yet. If we presumably, I mean, if we find a a two bedroom house and they they are people that are coming out for the three or four nights at a time and not moving out here, a two bedroom house, we could theoretically put both people in that in alternating weeks, they could just each have a room. If someone ends up coming out and filling the position and brings a family with them and needs a bigger place, you know, we'd have to have two rents. Or two solutions there. But in the short term, I don't see, you know, at least going into the winter through the winter. I don't see it being anything more realistically, anything more than having, you know, a rotation of people filling the seven nights a week. So I would assume a two bedroom place that would give us the ability to have one one rent cost, one utility set of bills. We can just if we can find a place that's suitable for that type of setup. If the problem becomes we need to find a place for a family, then so be it. But we need to secure something sooner rather than later. The shifts right now, it looks like they're just filling the four, you know, forty hours a week currently with just daytime shifts at the moment. So I'll find out more tomorrow on that. So if anyone knows of any two bedroom house rents, let me know. Again, you guys, you've seen the emails, we've gotten a few emails in the last couple of weeks about fireworks and noise downtown with with school and tires. I don't know, some of you responded to some of those. I don't know if it if it's something the board wants to do is, you know, just acknowledging generally to the community that, you know, you're aware of the concerns people have and maybe share those concerns and, you know, looking to continue to work through providing the coverage to hopefully deter some of that. But I don't know if it's, you know, something that you guys wanted to address the community on, like through a letter to the community or something.
I think everybody is frustrated and upset.
I don't know, I think we need to write a letter to the community as a whole. I think everybody knows that everybody is frustrated and upset about it. And that right now, I certainly don't have a solution immediately. Other than telling young people to be more creative about where they go in performing the shenanigans.
I'm not sure that everybody is aware how frustrated everyone is though, because these individuals continue to do this. So if they're not, I don't know. It shows that we're trying to do something, we share everyone's frustration that we don't have a solution unfortunately right now. But we are aware that people are still doing this and it's not okay. Maybe we at least make that clear, maybe some of them will stop doing it. That's our chance.
I I agree that not everyone is aware and in particular, people who are the offenders are not aware. I don't think it would be a bad idea to send a letter out acknowledging the difficulties and acknowledging that we're that it's on our on the front burner. And that we're doing our best to address it. It might put some people's minds at ease and it might put the some of the offenders who care a little more than others on notice that they should back off.
You want to write that letter, do you think? I don't have time to write a letter right now. I can do that. Can you can email it to us and as long as there's no major changes, you can send it out soon or later.
Or publish in the wind?
Yeah, probably, yeah, you know, publishing it, we have we have that page obviously. And Facebook and white town website.
Or is it the mail in?
Yeah, that might even better than the mailing. For that matter, I mean, you know, it's gonna reach more people than the mailing. Most people that are bothered to read their mail are the people that are.
Doing burnouts through Bay Street.
Yeah. I haven't thought we're talking.
I'm sure they've seen people clean about it on Facebook and they just don't care.
Well, they know that it's getting a rise out of them, so they keep doing it.
I I have I have a feeling they know exactly what they're doing and why people get upset about it.
And they're like, ah, these people aren't for me, I'll just keep doing it to wind them up more.
Right.
That's what I mean.
Well, that's unfortunate because it's not, it's all of us. We all hear it, we're all upset, we're all disgusted with them. They're just acting like a bunch of idiots.
Yeah, like I reminded somebody the other day, the people who came to us and persuaded us to write the fireworks owners, every single one of them was a native Islander.
Right.
Yeah, I I think that's.
I wasn't so much talking about fireworks as I was film time.
Well, I don't know, I I don't know what the solution is, but there is one.
A cop on the island overnight certainly helps, you know.
There isn't any way that those cameras down there, when they see someone doing a burnout, they can't write a ticket?
I mean, they may be identified by the vehicle, but you're sure I'm not gonna see the driver at night through those cameras. But if you see.
How do they, I've gotten a ticket from Maryland for speeding, they couldn't see me in the car, they just sent it to the registered owner for.
Right. And they got a picture of your license plate presumably clearly.
Right, that's how they send it to you. So that doesn't work, that's not the same law in Maine, they can't send them a improvement speed on that car, doesn't go against their license. But whoever's licensed, you know, the license owner has to pay the fine. Start sending some fines out that way. Obviously, obviously buying two hundred dollar tires isn't really affecting them, but if they're getting getting a bunch of fines on top of that, it might need to do something, I mean.
Well, you have to get the license plate though, right?
Well, yeah, so Andy, Andy actually showed me that back in March, we had a there was a, you know, kind of a increase in activity around then. And Andy showed me the pickup truck and asked if I recognized the pickup truck. But, you know, there was no picture of the license plate and I know I've seen the truck, but I couldn't offer a lie for me to tell you.
But you couldn't see a license plate?
No, there was.
Some of them presumably maybe you could, right?
I saw the decal on the back window, but I never seen it, I just couldn't, you know, couldn't tell you who.
Yeah, that's.
And they're good quality, but at nighttime in the dark without having it lit up and the resolution that it presents at isn't gonna tell you the license plate number. It can give you a good description of the vehicle to the point where someone, if there was a cop to follow up with to to question someone, you know. But it it's not in itself going to definitively tell you in that fraction, the cops have shared this before that that type of infraction or violation is something that you need to have someone. You know, the cop actually see it happen at the time. Or and or have someone who did see it, who is willing to be a witness to I saw so and so at this time doing that come forward. You know, and there might be something more they can, there is something more they can do at that point, but.
So exactly what did those cameras do on us down there?
They do a lot during the daytime. They've been effective, the other part will not do the daytime with some busted windows.
Also, I know it's getting late in the year to think about speed bumps, but I was thinking, you know, why couldn't we put some speed bumps, temporary speed bumps, because you can't have them in the winter, obviously, in the parking lot where you drive around, not in the parking spaces, obviously, but that would prevent a considerable amount of obstacles. So that people wouldn't be able to be doing big, you know.
Or what about road spikes?
Well, that's another solution. But you know, like something like that, you know, how if you can't just go in there and do a bunch of wheelies? If there's six or eight speed bumps in the.
Or if we could just block off the parking lot after nine o'clock. Because you don't need it, especially this time of year, right? Nobody used to go down there and park at night. I don't know.
That's perfectly reasonable suggestion.
Just just shut down the parking lot and then people can't do their nuts.
That wouldn't be adros.
Then who's gonna go open it up at four in the morning so the fisherman can park?
Right, that's, I'm not saying it's perfect, I'm just saying it's adoption.
Lock her up.
I mean, to me, the speed bumps would be.
But if you can get in the parking lot, you'll have speed bumps throughout the parking space, are you still?
No, just in the travelway, you know, around the entire travelway, around the parking spaces.
Okay.
Then they'll just do them in front of the grocery store where there's all the space there.
Yeah.
Well, I go she still.
Well, that would be a start if we thought that that would help.
Yeah.
You know, but that was something, something's gonna be done.
So these speed bumps, removable speed bumps, nor they haven't had a problem, right? With them, when the road crew removing the speed bumps, it was a, you know, they're pretty easily, if, you know, they're just screw gun and then.
Well, then we would have the cameras showing people with screw guns removing speed bumps.
But then again, if it's at night, you're gonna run into the same issue.
It's a hooded sweatshirt.
Do you get someone's license plate number, is it? Yeah. So it might be shutting down the parking lot after a certain hour, might.
Well, I know they they need to have a clock out here and have them sit down there somewhere and write a few tickets.
Yes.
Well, if we could get one.
Well, I mean, I'll.
Presumably at some point, hopefully before next summer, we will have one.
Now, I'll reiterate and share with the sheriff and the administrator tomorrow, some of the emails we've gotten, so they understand the the urgency and the concern others are raising and hopefully that'll jog them to get some overnight coverage out here. As we continue to find the longer term solution. Shellfish management, water quality, it's brought some issues forward, I think in the spring or during the winter. About about this time last year, we were notified by the state saying that they're proposing some changes to the to the shoreline. You know, the clam flat closures, basically what we're talking about here. And they put off some of the 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 changes last year. This year, they're looking at restricting a fair amount of the shoreline if it goes forward. All of the thoroughfare, I think all of Long Cove or upper the Crockett's Cove.
Not a Long Cove on this.
And in through like Seal Bay, not up to Seal Bay from the Mill River. Seal Bay is mostly opens a couple of spots, I think, within it that they're talking about restricting. Most of the east side's open, I don't know how productive it actually is over there anyways. But all of this stems from water quality samples that they take. Things have been trending in the wrong direction with the time of year that they've been taking them. At least they don't, they do not come out every year. And they're looking at reducing the number of test sites they have out here as well. That's where we started heading down the road last year into March. I was working on an application for a grant with the state to do water quality testing that we could partner with them. So they wouldn't close at least those sites down for for the year. So that got delayed and sidetracked and never got submitted. As all all energy was shifted to COVID. But there are some people that are concerned and injured, there are some aquaculture leases along in those areas. You know, just making sure they're aware of it, trying to find partners with us to try and help with sampling the other people involved and interested in that, that can help us. I do need to get a meeting together with some of those people that I talked to last year, just so that they're aware of it. I think we could probably find some interest within those groups of people. Aquaculture is a growing thing. It's, we're finding out last year through some of the kelp growers that it doesn't affect just the clambers. It it might affect the kelp growing operations too, if they're growing kelp in areas that are restricted. And they might have a reduction in the buyers that they could sell. So I don't know, other than continuing to talk with D M R, continuing to find out, can we identify the the source of pollution? If it's if it's overboard septic systems or discharges that we just don't know about, that's gonna be a lot easier to deal with. If it's a natural occurring thing, like when the migrating birds come through or runoff from just animals. They said actually dogs actually do carry a a high number of or high amounts of like a coli in their stool. And if something like that were to, you know, people weren't to pick up after the dogs, for example, Freeman, I think they use as an example for really trying to target this. This issue, you know, that sits into an into a ditch, the stool, it rains, you know, there's a lot of a coli generally. This was just one extreme example, he was telling me that it would be really hard to pinpoint, it's not a point source solution. And we'd have to, you know, do an effort, make an effort to adjust the community and say, please pick up after your dogs. This could be causing it. So there are ways to DNA test the a coli. And we might be able to determine in some areas, you know, is there a species of animal causing it? It could be human, if it's human, that means there's probably a discharge somewhere. But if it's not human, it's gonna be hard to, you know, figure out what that is. They did, they did say migrating birds could could cause spikes in the in the numbers.
But a lot of these dots on here are green and they still have it closed.
There are some green ones, there are also a lot of red and black and yellow.
But like in some of these places, there's green dots like right in the middle where they have them closed, so it's obviously not totally contaminated.
Right, yeah, some of the sites are fine, but you know, and so I did ask, I think that there's some capacity to work with the school potentially on this. I think there's a teacher or two or some classes that might be able to help dig into some of the data if we can get it from the state. And to have a better overview or so. The only way for me to see the numbers right now is if I've saved previous maps from previous years and I can compare them side by each. But if we get the data in a spreadsheet form or, you know, we could do a little bit more with that and look back further. And, you know, maybe it is something about the time of year, you know, we can identify just from the days the samples were collected. So I think which is something we need to continue to work, look into, presumably it's something that you want us to look into. At the very least, I'll just try and at least share the information with folks that have expressed interest in it. And if opportunities come along for testing, do you want me to try and pursue those if we can get grant funds or find ways to partner with people to volunteer to do that? Cover the swap shop, cover the development fund. And I did meet with members of the Bottom Haven Solidarity Group just to get a better perspective of, are they asking of anything of the town? The select board to work with, the change policies of. So it was a good conversation and we're not asking anything of the select board at the moment. You did hear the question about other other ways that we could look at addressing community safety concerns at the special town meeting. So I guess just, you know, where they're at, they're still trying to form their ideas, they're interested in having, they're some hosting community conversations around that idea of, you know, what is it, you know, to to improve community safety and access to to resources and healthcare and housing? That kind of help support that that notion of community safety. Just generally sharing that. Talked about the E D A. Obscure Island air rates did change, as Phil mentioned. They also, in doing so, and one of the more recent bills we got from them included an additional two hundred and thirty five dollars to bring back the E M T. That was something that's had had been included in the emergency flight cost. If that's gonna stand and continue to be that way, then we're gonna presumably gonna wanna look again at the the billing rates for the ambulance and specifically the cost of the flight. We already, we did just raise it this year, just last month, to acknowledge that there is a cost for us to transfer at times to South Promised Den. So this is something that we're gonna have to presumably, so I'll find out more. I'm also meeting with them tomorrow while I'm over there about the contract. And so I'll bring this up and see if that's something that will continue to stand or or not. We didn't know that was gonna happen until we saw the the bill. The gallamander, I did call Molly, who worked on the gallamander last year, just to kind of run by some thoughts on moving the gallamander to be able to do the the work underneath it. She really strongly encouraged us to find a way to move that without rolling it, but to move it without the weight on the wheels, just fully not knowing you know, how those components inside that hub are gonna, do they still function, will it turn well? It is a pretty heavy thing. So I think there's there's ways to look at doing it, if there's a way to kind of lift it up and slide it on a beam, for example. We just need to find someone, a company or someone that's, you know, we can hopefully, you know, we're gonna want to make sure whoever's doing it presumably has insurance or take on the full risk of knowing that it could be damaged. I did ask Kevin if there was a possibility of using the the travel lift, but there's no way that that thing's gonna make the clearance and needs to get up there. How we would do it after that was a whole nother feat, but I did think about, you know, was that a possibility? How we would do it after that was a whole nother feat, but, you know, I did think about, you know, is that a possibility? So I don't know if the, if that move, if there's any building movers, you know, Dan Vicfords worked with the company recently that he was gonna give me contact information for. The ones that you use for the hotel, I don't think are, I heard they're not doing work out here anymore, um, I never did hear back from him after the general monument. They looked at that and I don't think we ever heard back from them. So if anyone else knows of anyone that.
How much does it weigh? Any idea?
I don't know.
Can we get it to like twenty people and?
Take more than, you know, take more than twenty.
Carry it then.
Oh, I just meant like, I got them a mover like five, six feet to the right, left, right.
I, I think you'd be surprised at just how much, I don't know what it is, I don't know if Molly's report might have estimated, I can't remember.
I'm sure it's very heavy.
Um.
Well, you're gonna be talking, if you're getting movers out here from the mainland, it's gonna cost more moving for your thing than put the slide down.
Right.
So there goes your ten thousand dollars.
And still, I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to a couple local guys and see if they've got some creative ways to try and do that, there's ways that we can look at doing it. I mean, I think if you can get a couple of beams under there and in theory.
I am optimistic.
I don't know that we wanna try.
I can't believe those wheels still turn.
And if they do, they probably turn and then fall off.
Well, that gallamend is only, what, fifty years old, right? All the wood was replaced in the seventies, I mean, there's only like two original pieces, so falls apart until the day one.
Um, the, uh, bank rates, talk about the bank rates, um, I'll reach out to some of those that we've reached out to for, for the rates on the lending. Um, just a quick update on the tax exemption and abatement request from Hurricane Island Foundation, um, I did give you some of the court documents that have been filed since, um, over the last month. Um, we did just file yesterday our, uh, remand that Wes was ordered to, to file, um, and reconsider the application for exemption. Um, still finding that it doesn't meet the, he still finds that it doesn't meet the scientific or the ownership requirements to be eligible for an exemption. Uh, for real estate exemption.
What, what scientific requirements doesn't it meet?
I'd have to look, share the document, I don't recall off the top of my head, um, made a very thorough case on it. I think one of the big ones that sticks out to me was that the statute, um, or past court cases require it be primarily used for scientific purposes or endeavors. And a lot of their documents don't have scientific as the primary focus of that organization, a lot of it's first education based. Um, so I think just based on that, that was one that sticks out to me that I recall reading, um, but I can email you the, the document that we submitted. Um, that goes into a lot more detail, sort of forty-three page piece that he submitted, um, so there's a lot more detail on all of the components required to comply with that statute. So for this week, mentioned, uh, meetings with Knott's County Sheriff, PIA tomorrow, um, Thursday, a quick check in with some of the businesses on the island. Some point the meeting with the shellfish, um, stakeholders, if you will, on the island. Continue on the land purchase for the public works garage, um, be working with Matt closer on, um. A little more, more on the strategic plan, finalizing that document, so it's a working piece that the departments can look, reference and look to and find a way to integrate that into the budgeting process. Um, for next year. And I did meet already just today with Kevin and Dan, so there's a few questions I have to ask of the state about sidewalk width and drop, drop off heights. Before we need guardrails in place, um, there's a couple pretty steep drop offs going down that hill. Um, there's some significant drainage things to take into consideration, um, there's an open ditch for some of that and now for others, and. So just a couple of things to follow up there, um, we did talk about breaking it down in like hundred foot sections. Um, otherwise, you know, we're probably looking at a significant dedicated chunk of time to try and do it, so we might be able to. Break that up into hundred foot sections and kind of piece it together over a period of time, um, over a few months. Kevin, if we commit to doing it, you fully believe it's something that can be done between the spring and summer, um, if we have the funds committed to doing that. Um, but again, a lot more information to present on some of the design pieces on that.
Yeah, that would, yeah, what is, do you remember what ADA with this?
I believe they want a minimum of four feet, as long as you have so many, a, a pull off area, so many feet or five feet, I believe is the minimum.
Right. Which is, you know, it's right now, can't be much more than the two or three or three.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a, yeah, sidewalk, so you're gonna have to create some land.
Well, so there is, because of that, that drainage system that's there, we do have the ability to move closer to the road. Um, and, and think of a, a, a way to incorporate the drainage either under or along the sidewalk differently than it is now. So that's what we were talking about today.
Could become a, could become a project.
Like, for example, you could drop a couple of catch basins in where the culvert openings are now, that's in the water under the road, put a catch basin there. You could, you know, we, one thing we talked about is creating like a French drain, like, you know, it's already got the depth, you know, can you backfill that with some sizable stone? That'll allow the water to drop and pass through, um, you know, and act as like a French drain, or you could run a pipe down through there and have it covered. And have the sidewalks, you know, sit along or over it, um, so I think lots to consider there still in terms of, you know, how we can accomplish that, but. Working on it.
Okay, thank you.
Keep shaping it for a gondola over the hill.
For board members.
There's another painting contractor wrote in, I was just, no, is not out here anymore, uh, can we contact them?
Can I ask Tony Jones to give us the number as well?
For the file?
Yeah.
Okay, good. And would you contact that other outfit too?
Yeah, I would.
Talking about.
I don't know.
I'll get the information for you.
Okay.
I'll lose trail of something down the, um, wall.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, Jim has a piece going in, uh, wind this week, giving folks till next Thursday, uh, to remove them, he's already talked with the public works. And so they can help move them once he, like, once he gives them the green light to do that, but, um, so Jim, again, wrote something for the wind that'll go in this week, we'll put it online. Um, give folks a full week's notice to remove them, um, it's not, they can't be there at all, it's just forty-eight hours and they. It's reasonable to think that they could be just put somewhere else. Um, most of them, Jim said, most of them don't have any registration. Um, I don't know, the VIN number might be hard to find sometimes, some of them might be homemade, so they wouldn't have one, um, probably not in it. So he has, he has been doing that, so that's what the thought was, was post something this week's wind, give them a full week to remove it.
That they're just gonna be taking.
They'll be just taking over.
Transportation.
Yeah. If that's, if that's acceptable.
Town dump down there.
Bill.
Yeah, um, I sent a letter to the, I mean, I set an account about the ferry service out to the selection, I heard from Pam and Jake.
Yeah.
How do you two feel about?
Yeah, it's fine, yeah.
I'm sure the same concerns as Jake, but I, yeah.
I mean, I don't think we shouldn't try it, I'm just kind of skeptical that anything will come with it.
There's every reason to be skeptical.
Yep.
But on the other hand.
We have to try.
We have to try, yes.
And it's get, it's getting, in some cases, it's getting worse.
Yeah.
Uh, Ed Hurst caregiver came over here and took care of Ed Hurst for two days, and then she went back across. Went into the parking lot, got her car, opened the door, the ticket for her car blew up. And fell onto somebody's car, she couldn't find it, she had the receipt, she went back in the office, tried to show the girl the receipt, she wouldn't even look at it. Told her, if you want to leave that lot, give me ninety-five dollars.
What?
Oh, on the other side.
On the other side, and that's what happened, she gave her ninety-five dollars, so she could go home to Portland.
For two days, should have been, what, twenty-four dollars?
I don't know why it was ninety-five dollars, but the very notion, she wouldn't look at the receipt.
Oh, that's not right.
It's like this story.
Well, it's not why they give you receipts, they have a backup if you lose it.
Yeah.
They wouldn't give her a new one.
And, uh. But this system over here isn't, isn't working, I mean, we never thought it was gonna work, that's why we.
Right.
Well, one thing I have noticed, not that I call for line number, is up, as little as possible, but it said your wait is, what, is five minutes. And then five minutes later, it said your wait is less than five minutes, and finally, twenty minutes later, they picked up. Now, what does that mean?
The longest recorded time for the, for the five minute notice has been an hour and forty-five minutes.
Yeah, imagine it.
But the whole point of getting rid of the standbys was to make this quicker, and it hasn't been as many people calling in this summer, and it's been ten times slower.
Worse.
And imagine what it would like if it was a regular something, yeah.
Or if they were giving out standbys, they're not even doing that this summer, so what should, their whole argument that it was gonna be quicker. Obviously isn't true, so they should go back to giving out standbys, if they can't speed up the process.
Right, right.
And I don't know why it takes so long.
All you have to punch in is seven numbers or eight numbers, the four numbers for the time, and the four numbers for the.
Yeah, they're just not taking calls, like, they take a call and then like, go take a smoke break and then like, come back, take another call and then go.
But the music's great.
Oh, yeah, it's actually five thirty in the morning, so you want.
Are you gonna bring up the request from PIA for the, the second van, uh, on a morning boat?
Oh, that's right, I knew there was something.
I can write, I haven't written anything, I can write something up if you want, as the request from the, the board had, had agreed to send that request in on their behalf, so if you want to give that to them Thursday?
Yeah.
There's six boats and probably.
An average of what?
Sixty, sixty, seventy cars that you can give out line numbers for.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
So if they, if they did want a minute, it would take an hour, and then they could just say, we're out of numbers every time they pick up the phone. Because if they don't have any numbers, they're not giving out standbys.
Right.
Right, isn't that how it works?
Yeah.
When the numbers are gone, if they answer the phone, they'll be like, oh, you gotta come down and get a standby on it.
Right.
I'm assuming I haven't, never called this summer.
I don't understand why they can't say, we're gonna hand out just a certain number of standbys in a day. That would have really, you know, you could assume eight or nine cars and without leaving safe property, that was one of their concerns.
Well, the proposal we gave them in February included that very thing, a limited number of standbys.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
It just. But the standbys, like, could be, if you call and you don't get a seven. And there's no other boats until one o'clock, you say, I'll just take a standby, not like, wasn't that our proposal too? You couldn't get a number and a standby on the same call.
Right, you had to get one and the other.
Right, yeah, so you could call back and get a standby later if you wanted.
Probably the best long-term solution is put everything online and have a mobile app, just like they do in airports. And you just go and you scan your phone, you know, that's how you sign up for it, they open it up, it's like when you buy concert tickets.
Right.
And eliminate the island terminals altogether, you don't need terminals out here, Gasco Bay has been doing it forever.
The commissioner stated.
With one terminal.
The commissioner stated it was his goal that the next biennial budget, which would be starting about a year from now, I, I think they're thereabouts.
Yeah.
Well, he wanted to include an online ticketing system, so that's what they were working on, is getting a sys, supposedly getting a system in place that would prepare them to be able to do that with the next biennial budget.
At the center of the year two thousand, twenty years later.
So presumably then, you're gonna be able to go on, online at a certain time in the morning.
Presumably, I don't know.
It would open up at like, say, five o'clock or six o'clock online, like, it would be locked until then, but then everyone could go on there at the same time and put in what boat they wanted and it would be first come first.
They do it at night for the next day.
Is it worth, is it worth checking in Thursday with them and see if that's still a plan or when that timeline on that is?
Yeah.
Hopefully there'll be community input and something like that.
I mean, I think it would be easier for them to outsource the phone calls to India, and we get better service than we do having a call down here. It's what everyone else does.
And they're easier to understand.
Me, they, they know what they're doing, they are, that's what they do over there, they have call centers.
Yeah.
Can't the state look into outsourcing it?
Is there anything else under reporting members?
One other thing, and that is that, I'm gonna ask about this, but I've heard from several sources, two of whom work at the ferry service. That someone's gonna propose we no longer have line cars available to us in Rockland.
Oh, God.
Why would they do that?
I have no idea, but I'll find out Thursday.
Well, they certainly cut back on the, uh, that was certainly cut back on their amount.
Their revenue.
Revenue that they're gonna get in a park.
Yeah, yeah, I'll let you know.
Well, some, I mean, they can't tell us that we can't keep a car in the parking lot over there, because some people don't take a car, they walk over and get one.
Right.
So what are they proposing that you have to go on the boat you're in line for?
Yeah.
Well, I'm not sure, I'll find out Thursday.
Okay, because that would be the only thing they could do. I mean, you'd have to be in your car, they tow everything that was in line?
I do so, I do believe the main state ferry service might drive me here.
I think they should, I think you should propose that they take the service part out of that main, just be the main state ferry.
Yeah.
Period.
So that means.
No, I'm determined to leave the service in, it's my grandfather, whenever Louis started that ferry service, and they had the service in mind when they did it.
So that would mean that you wouldn't be able to take your car and put it in line and then take your car from here over. Put the car you have in the parking lot in line.
And go do your errands.
And do your errands, bring your car back and then put your.
Well, they already got rid of, they already got rid of the overflow, didn't they, over there, that's bus parking.
Yeah, I actually parked in it a couple of weeks ago, I waited for somebody to help me.
But you can drop off now in the bu, the old bus stop thing, God.
Yes, so but how does it work? If you come and there's no room for you to get in line, you just sit there in one of the spots in front of the ferry, and when there's room, you just race over there and get in it? Or do they give you a number?
Do a lap and come back as it was at one point when it was full too, I mean, if there's nowhere to park, I think their expectation is that you, you, you do a lap somewhere else and come back, that's what I understood. I mean, there's no, if there's no addition, I mean, there, there is a, trying to think where the, the, they still do the overflow for that across the top, or is it just that horse?
Last time I, when I was coming back from my camping trip, they had people lined up, up near the road.
It's just along that sidewalk, they've got that now for buses and taxis.
So they have you go across the top?
Yeah, and, and people go across the top.
So there's still some, but I mean, at some point, there's still a limit to where cars can park anyways, and so at some point, the, the solution is you gotta come back another time. Um, it just, they've taken away another ten, ten spots.
Basically just don't ever think about leaving, you know, after Memorial Day and until after Labor Day.
I guess I don't.
Never try to go.
All right, I'm a weird jerk.
Second.
All the favor. I, I'm just wow.
You're just wow.